Agenda for our meeting. We have ordinance on second reading.
Before you get to that, Mr. Council President, I just want to make a note for the record that your D1 public hearing did protest. You have to be speaking with one of the attorneys and then the other party, the protesting party. Apparently, there were some issues with respect to them being here tonight to present both sides in story by consent. You can carry that until the 18th July in the next meeting at 5:30.
Thank you.
And accordingly, we're going to hold the resolution which deals with that topic, which is 22.
Thank you. All right, we have ordinance on second reading. Number one, an ordinance to amend and supplement revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick Title 10 vehicles in traffic, Chapter 10 dash 20, handicap parking section 10 dash 20 dash 010, schedule 39 parking of handicapped persons. Add 111 choice come out of. Then we have ordinance on first reading. Number one, amendment, supplement, amended management salary ordinance. Add title Superintendent Public Works. Two, in order to amend and supplement revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick Title 10 vehicles in traffic, Chapter 10 dash 16, stopping and standing or parking, Section 10 dash 16 dash 010, Schedule 24, no parking at any time, reference to Scott Street. And we have three, in order to amend and supplement revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick Title 10 vehicles in traffic, Chapter 10 dash 12, traffic control regulations, Section 10 dash 12 dash 210, Schedule 21, mid-block crosswalks, reference to Little Albany Street. Four, in order to amend and supplement revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick Title 10 vehicles in traffic, Chapter 10 dash 12, vehicles, vehicle, excuse me, traffic control regulations, Section 10 dash 12 dash 100, Schedule 11, bus stops, reference along College Avenue. Then we have resolution one, approve agenda amendments. Two, approve payroll. Three, authorize refund within tax sales certificates. Four, authorize professional service agreement to McManon Scott and Diamond LLC for abandoned properties council services not to exceed $25,000. Five, authorize property lien for board of security. Location 269 Tower Street, Block 240, Lot 25. Amount $3,314,43 cents. Six, approve person-to-person place-to-place transfer liquor license pocket, liquor license number 121433034003. 186 Hamilton Street for Casmas Incorporated for Prunka's A Incorporated. Seven, approve amendment of resolution R dash 0611, 061613, reason company name change from National Joint Powers Alliance, NJPD, Co-opted Sourcewell for participation in cooperative purchasing programs. Eight, approve ABC liquor license renewal. Nine, authorized purchase by fire department state contract, A dash 89980M dash 483, National Value Point Computers and Wireless Electronics Incorporated doing businesses wireless communications and electronics, two computer and accessories not to exceed $9,493.58. Ten, approve amendment of resolution of Housing Board Department, Navy Sineam Medina Hernandez expires April 3, 2022, 11, approved request for use of city property requested by New Brunswick Alumni Chapter of Capital Alpha Site Incorporated. Location New York Park, Tranching Pavilion for alumni 5K and one-mile walk. Date Saturday, September 15, 2018, time 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. 12. Approve amendment and rules resolution R dash 041 to 808. Reason change date of event from June 2, 2018 to September 8, 2018. Approved request for use of city property requested by St. Peter's Healthcare System and New Brunswick Recreation. Location New York Park Field, facing Eastern Avenue for community up there conjunction with New Brunswick Recreation Day of Fun Saturday, September 8, 2018, time 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. Police extra duty. Thirteen, request for street closing requested by Robert Wood Johnson Medical School Lane to open Livingston Avenue between New and George Street for Robert Wood Johnson Medical School and White Coast Center on date Friday, April 3, 2018. Welcoming first-year medical students, date Friday, April 3, August 3, 2018. Time 3 p.m. to 5 p.m. Police extra duty. Fourteen, approve amendment of resolution, reason additional amount $12,000 for division of parks with Sal Electric Company Incorporated for electrical maintenance and repair services. Term 12-month period commencing February 4, 2018, ending February 5, 2019, specification 49415P, not to exceed $12,000. Approve of this change will constitute increase 20% more of the original contract. Fifteen, approve award of contracts for Atlantic Tactical Incorporated for furnished and delivered work from home for housing inspection and fire prevention. Term 12-month period commencing July 20, 2018, and ending July 19, 2019, specification 68018P, not to exceed $15,800. Sixteen, advised and consent to appointment of Victor Ferris, Principal Public Works Manager. Seventeen, advising consent to designation of public officers by Mayor Pursuit to revise general ordinances to Chapter 15 dash 6, abandoned property rights rehabilitation order. Eighteen, approve authorization of acceptance grant with Middlesex County Department of Community Services for 2018-2019 New Brunswick Alliance on substance abuse prevention. Cash match $7,008 to $83,050 grant, $31,534. Nineteen, approve resolution authorizing request to the city, request to New Jersey Department of Transportation for extension of time of the city's fiscal year 2016 municipal urban aid agreement from May 3, 2018 to August 23, 2018. Twenty, approve of amendment of resolution change order number three, JTG Construction Incorporated for Wilcox Road, Lucas Village Water Main to place in project phase two contact, specification number 62517W. Amount $36,355,064. Approve of this change will order will not constitute an increase of 20% more of the original contract. Twenty-one, approve of amendment of resolution R dash 021829, reason additional amount of $170,000 for the water utility with BMW construction of New Jersey equipment and labor not to exceed $170,000. Approve of this change will constitute an increase of the original 20% of more of the original contract. Twenty-two, award, oh yeah, that's on hold. Thank you, thank you. And the next one? No. Twenty-three, approve rejection proposals and authorization to rebid for maintenance and repairs from supervisory control data acquisition, SCADA system for the system for water utility specification number 68218RFP. Twenty-four, approve of amendment of resolution R dash 0711814, reason additional amount $50,000 for the water utility with Sal Electric Company Incorporated for electrical maintenance and repair services. Term 12-month period commencing February 4, 2018, ending February 3, 2019, specification 29415P not to exceed $50,000. Approve of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% of more of the original contract. Twenty-five, approve renewal of license condition for 2018-2019 liquor license for La Famosa La Famosa Incorporated, 117 Rimson Adams, liquor license number 121433045003. Twenty-six, approve of amendment of resolution R dash 061882, change order number one credit with World Corporation Incorporated for furnished and installation of fitness station, equipment and mags, specification number 91718RB. Credit amount $25,999.50. Approve of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% of more of the amount of original contract. Twenty-seven, approve award of contract with Severe Structures LLC for emergency securing of properties for the division of fire prevention. Term 12-month period commencing July 6, 2018, July 6, 2018, and ending July 5, 2019. Specification number 67418P, not to exceed $40,000. And then public discussion and base. This meeting will now come to an end. We'll put the police wheels down and call them.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Egan?
Here.
Councilmember Escobar?
Here.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Here. Please be advised that the notice and requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act has been complied and satisfied in the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick. Has been filed by the city clerk and has been placed on the appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of the city hall of New Brunswick, New Jersey and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick named The Home News Tribune. Will be seen as a pleasure.
A pleasure we finish to the flag of the United States of America and the City Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please have one in the silence of those that have continued to defend their freedom around the world and within our own borders and those who have lost sense of violence. Thank you. Approve of the minutes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. Okay, now we have correspondence by the city clerk. We have the meeting correspondence.
A letter from Department of Environmental Protection in regards to receipt of reports for the 2018 dam safety inspection. A letter from Department of Environmental Protection in regards to a completed review of the ISRA semi-annual progress report. A request from Stephen Sweet for release and return of a site performance guarantee. The correspondence will be forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you.
Here, welcome.
Actually, we have another hearing that's on hold. And now we go to the ordinance on second reading. Number one, an ordinance to amend and supplement revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick Title 10 vehicles in traffic, Chapter 10 dash 20, vehicles, handicap parking, Section 10 dash 20 dash 010, schedule 39, parking of handicapped person. Add 111 choice come out of. Anybody in the public would like to speak on this? Seeing none? The ordinance.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. Okay, now we have ordinance on first reading. Number one, an ordinance to amend and supplement of salary ordinance, add title Superintendent Public Works.
Move the ordinance setting down July 18, 2018 at 5:30 p.m. Same date to be out of town.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan? Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. Okay, now we have number two, in order to amend and supplement revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick Title 10 vehicles in traffic, Chapter 10 dash 16, stopping and standing, parking, Section 10 dash 16 020, Schedule 24, no parking at any time, reference to Scott Street.
Move the ordinance setting down July 18, 2018 at 5:30 p.m. Same date to be out of town.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.
Number three, an ordinance to amend and supplement revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick Title 10 vehicles in traffic, 10 dash 12, traffic control regulations, Section 10 dash 12 dash 210, Schedule 21, mid-block crosswalks, reference to Little Albany Street. Move the ordinance setting down July 18, 2018 at 5:30 p.m. Same date to be out of town.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. We have four, in order to amend and supplement revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick Title 10 vehicles in traffic, 10 dash 12, traffic control regulations, Section 10 dash 12 1000. Schedule 11, bus stops, reference to College Avenue.
Move the ordinance setting down July 18, 2018 at 5:30 p.m. Same date to be out of town.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. Now we have resolutions. One, 27, holding 22. Anybody in the public would like to speak? Please be reminded, okay, please give your name and address. Please remind that you have five minutes.
Good evening, members of the council. It's Charles Cradaville from New Brunswick, the editor of New Brunswick Today, candidate for mayor of the great city of New Brunswick. First of all, I'd like to ask about this number 804. I believe it's also related to 817. And I'd like to ask, these are in reference to the city's abandoned property ordinance, correct? And so that ordinance was passed back in early 2016. I see on the city's website on February 5, 2016, they mentioned that sort of the first step is going to be the city compiling a list of properties that would be affected by the new ordinance. And it says here as of February 5, 2016, the city is in the process of compiling that list. I've made multiple open public records requests this year to try to obtain that list. And I was told as recently as May 19 that it does not exist. Can you please provide an update on this first step to implementing this ordinance that the council adopted back in early 2016?
Mr. Council President, members of council, as you know, adopting this ordinance, the operation of the ordinance as it applies to abandoned properties in the city as well as any other city, very complicated process. In fact, this particular resolution that Mr. Cradaville speaks of, or the first one, has to do with a special counsel for specific phase that we may get to with abandoned properties. But the other resolution that names public officers as they are described under our ordinance, which is modeled after state statute, actually is the trigger, if you will, that will enable the city to create the abandoned property list now that we speak of. This particular project has been ongoing. I know Mr. Cradaville has a timeline and I don't dispute his timeline. It's probably accurate. But if I could use the term moving target is what abandoned properties are. They come on and off our radar, if you will. And to narrow down those that do qualify under our ordinance and under state statute is what our job is. And we have finally gotten to the point where we believe we could actually name officially this particular risk of abandoned properties and therefore pursue our options under the ordinance. The naming of the public officers, which soon council adopts that resolution this evening, will give those individuals the authority with the mayors involved as the ordinance so provides. Once that list has been adopted, if you will, Mr. Cradaville will obtain a copy of it. It'll be on our website. And then notices will go out to those particular property owners with respect to the operation of the ordinance. So it is a multifaceted, multi-phase process. And obviously, we want to do it right. And this is the process that we embark upon.
Thank you for the thorough answer. So I'll quote from the ordinance. It's Chapter 15, point 6, 0.030 subsection C. Says the public officer shall establish the abandoned property list and any additions thereto by publication in the official newspaper of the city of New Brunswick and, you know, so on and so forth. And then it will be available at the clerk's office. Can you tell me when approximately the city expects to publicize this list?
I know the administration is moving very aggressively now that we've gotten to the end of the line, so to speak. I don't want to commit anybody else's timeline because I'm not totally involved. I hope in the last 30 days we would have that particular list so deemed and published. And we'll see the first phase of this.
Okay, thank you. 806 is not in the packet, I guess because you have to decide whether you're going to approve it or not. But I'd like to know just the basics of this liquor license transfer. So to what place will it be transferred? And what was the cost of the sale?
The cost of?
Go ahead, Deputy Clerk.
The cost of the sale will be $125,000. And it will be located at 186 Hamilton Street.
Okay, so where is it located now?
Well, it's from the same location.
Okay.
So currently, it's going to be a personal question.
If I could explain, this particular license has always been at this particular location. As the council is probably aware, much litigation has ensued with respect to the matter. In fact, Mr. Sikka, who's attorney for Casmas, is sitting here in the front row in connection with this transfer. And I know seated next to him are the applicants on the transfer. Because this particular licensee was evicted, so to speak, from the premises by the landlord, we deemed it necessary to call it a person-to-person and place-to-place. But the license has always been at that particular home. As the council has been aware, I think Egan said at the last meeting, that this particular matter would come before you on a person-to-person, place-to-place transfer involving a new operator with a whole new business model. Mr. Markovich's letter to council, which council has received, actually it's a letter to me that I shared with council. They intend to, and they're here, and obviously any questions, Mr. Cradaville's done, council may have for them. I'm sure he'd be happy to answer. They're going to operate a small sit-down restaurant that's one or more than 13 seats. They are going to sell packaged goods from behind the bar as they are able to do on the different type of license under ABC laws. And there will be no nightclub, no dancing, no disco ball, no, what? Disco ball?
Bull riding.
None of that. So the applicant is asking that this particular license be transferred without the special conditions that the council placed on the license. As the council mayor's call, the arrangement that Mr. Sikka and I entered into on behalf of the city, he on behalf of his client is that the license establishment would not operate until they're sold to a third party. And that is where that is at this point. The place is not operated in more than a year, I believe.
All right, thank you for the thorough explanation. So 810 is amending the resolution from the last meeting. Just to clarify, that's to correct the pointing authority to be the city council, correct?
It was my head, Mr. Cradaville. As I said to you after the meeting last time, I misread, I had 67 resolutions or whatever it was. And I put the mayor's appointments, but your lady was the council's appointment.
Okay, everybody makes mistakes. So as far as Ms. Medina Hernandez being sworn in, I just wanted to learn a little bit about that process because I know we had a gubernatorial appointment who ended up never getting sworn in and resigned after a couple of months. Just want to make sure that she's swiftly, you know, given her position and seated. How does that work? Is the, can anyone swear her in? Does she have to just sign a piece of paper and take the oath?
Usually, a board member, commission member go to the clerk's office. The clerk would do the oath of office and sign, they would sign the certificate. The clerk would witness. But I don't know what happened with this particular individual. She may have, but very well have done it.
Not to the best, you know, the last information that I have, she did have all the paperwork that she's, the financial disclosures and all of that she has to complete. And as soon as that's done, then she will be sworn in.
Okay, and so?
I told me that it's going to be within the, by next week. Hopefully.
Okay, good. And I'm sure she can make a trip to the city clerk's office. But just in case she doesn't, by the time the next meeting rolls around, it would be acceptable for anyone to be that witness, right? She could come to the housing authority meeting and the chairman of the board or the executive director.
He could swear.
The attorney for the board could do it, right? Okay. So if she's at the next meeting, she's good to go. Can I learn a little bit about the changes in the public works department? I see a resolution here for pointing Mr. Ferr as the principal public works manager. Can you tell me what's changing here? I also notice an ordinance on first reading.
Well, Mr. Zarecki, as everyone knows, retired. Mr. Zarecki held a, I don't want to misquote, a municipal, let me get the right session. Which number is this? 816. I'm sorry. Mr. Zarecki held a license as Certified Public Works Manager, which is a requirement that each particular municipality under state statute has to have appointed such an individual with such a title with that particular license. This resolution, in light of Mr. Zarecki's retirement, names Mr. Ferr as the Certified Public Works Manager for the city of New Brunswick. Now, that doesn't mean that individual has to be a department head or a title of any other nature. That's not what this resolution does. It just names him as the city's principal public works manager as required under statute.
Thank you. Is that related to the ordinance on first reading? The creating a new title? Is that the same position or no?
I'm not going to speak on behalf of administration. I know it's on first reading. But I do know from my recollection was there is no title for superintendent of public works in our current ordinance that don't insist on you to pay. But I suspect this creates a title that you don't have and not be needed.
Okay, and so it's actually news to me that Mr. Zarecki retired. I don't say him here, but thank him for his service. Can you tell me the date that he quit? Or the effective date of?
A hundred days ago, Mr. Cradaville.
And in June.
Okay. And I believe he was actually the department head for two different departments, if I'm not mistaken, public works and engineering. Can you tell me who is currently the head of those departments?
I know that Mr. Moody and Mr. Valeni are in engineering. And I know Mr. Ferr has been over in public works for a while. But as far as there being an appointment of a department head, that hasn't occurred as of yet.
So the positions of those two department head positions So the positions of those two department head positions are vacant, as far as I know?
No, there was one department head, as you said, over both particular departments. And that position, because of Mr. Zarecki's retirement, would be vacant. But like I said, the departments are in good hands with those individuals. And I suspect when the mayor is ready to make a recommendation, we'd do so.
Okay. And the last one I'd like to ask about is eight-twenty-three. This is a, I guess the only bidder came in way too high. Can you tell me who was the bidder and what, you know, what the next step is for this SCADA system supervisory control? Exactly what is that?
Mr. Laddler, probably answer this question.
Yeah, I have one there. I believe it was Longo Electric was the bidder for the SCADA system. Their number was significantly higher than what we had budgeted. So we recommended to throw it out, put the RFP out there again and see if we'd catch any more fish.
Yeah, and I, thank you for being upfront about that. I would like to caution the city government not to do business with Longo. Is this Longo Electric or mechanical? Yeah, this is a company that's run by somebody who was convicted of crimes. Joseph Longo basically shortchanged his workers and lied to the Middlesex County Utilities Authority about it. He was convicted, and his friend, former governor Chris Christie pardoned him in December for those crimes. And I am not clear on whether he's even eligible to get public business. But regardless, the city should not do business with such a bad person. I don't think that that's the type of firm that we should do business with. Thank you. Anybody else on the resolution? Yes?
Please, the council, if you have any questions for the applicant on the cash mass transfer, that would be the appropriate time. Your resolution on the consent agenda is not in the package, or it has been prepared in a form of transfer that does not have any special conditions. And we could assume you adopted... I don't have any questions.
Assuming what Mr. Chan had said before, all those conditions are what you expect? Not a nightclub, just a restaurant, basically packaged goods?
Yeah, there's going to be no DJ, no live music, just a small family restaurant, bar, and packaged goods.
No radio?
No, nothing.
Two bucks?
Nothing.
Big radio?
No, no music at all. No music.
Two bucks?
Thank you.
Yes?
Motion.
Motion.
Why? Do you need to give resolutions? You can give all your resolutions now. Set agenda.
Anybody else? Yes. Anybody with a resolution? Stand up.
Resolution.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Wannan.
Yes. Now we have, I have some discussion with the council, everybody?
Yeah, I just want to talk about Steve Zarecki. Probably the longest city employee, I believe. He can't, he probably...
I think he might be right. I, I, he's, I think, the longest, the longest-serving department head, no doubt.
Known for a long time, and great job, gonna miss it.
Thank you. Glad to thank everybody who came out for the Declaration of Independence and its reading on Monday night. And all those who saw the fireworks, hopefully you liked them. Our vendor did not, I'll bet.
And I just want to commend, I know it was just started, the PlaySafe program's been in effect for a long time now. I've had two of my kids go through there, and it's been, it's been pretty positive, you know. So, just wanted to commend all the people that have been hired by them and just wish everybody safe somewhere.
All right. Now we have a public discussion. Please remember that we have five minutes. Please give your name and address for the record. And step forward to microphone.
Hello, Daniel Moore, wanted to come Stock Street. Well, I'm going to start off with today. Sunday, I saw something pretty scary were bringing memories back. That's where, you know, there's been very hot out. Where I, I saw a bunch of kids down at the river swimming to stay cool. I came down Monday and talked to Mr. Lachlan, excuse me, I pronounced it wrong, about is it something that he can do where I actually actually be able to turn on fire hydrants in certain areas? But he did tell me no, that that would affect with the fire department. And I will say, I do understand that, I will say to the fire department, wow, you did a great job two hours ago saving the house on fire over on Comstock Street. So I do understand why the hydrants cannot be open to keep the kids cool. But Mr. Lachlan also said that for the parks, a few of the parks are going to put sprinkler systems in to help try and keep the kids cool. And then I just heard you also mention about PlaySafe. And due to where I'm concerned about PlaySafe as far as the water. First, I did mention with Baker Park, what he did say the water fountain will be replaced. But at Joyce Comber Park, the water fountain is not working. And you have PlaySafe getting ready to start. And at Baker Park, excuse me, Feastless Park, wow. I will bring pictures to the next meeting with that water fountain. So what is the issue with all the water fountains not really in good condition with the parks?
I'll look into Ms. Kilmer and Feastless Park, you said?
Yes.
As far as we know, both are working. We're really looking to them. I know that the city is, we're in the middle of doing a heavy park improvement program.
Yes.
So the part about the spray pads being probably the best choice for our kids. So those will be going into Arch Ball Park as well as Joyce Comber Park. Hopefully both will be finished by first week in August. But in terms of the two water fountains, we're looking to both of them. PlaySafe, we have the director here, he can speak to exactly what they're doing in terms of water at the parks.
Okay, thank you. And then getting that, that, we just moved that in. I don't know if this year, hopefully.
We always provide the, on the, we started this year. On the days where the heat index is ninety-five or higher, we move the kids to an indoor facility. So, and we swim a park, went to the teen center. Today was the first day they were actually at the park. And then we brought them in probably early afternoon because the teen center was having, they do a theme party every week, so we invited them over to the theme party. We currently are in now, we are going to close Baker Park location. We didn't have any children. We waited there for the past few days. Tomorrow, I'll have somebody in just waiting and have a bus ready just in case kids show up, or we'll bus them over to Recreation Park, which is a little bit cooler, better facility, better layout for the kids. I was at Feastless this morning, the water fountain that I, I'm assuming you're speaking of, was working. But again, we had no kids show up this week at Feastless Park. I'll have a bus waiting just in case, and from here on out, they'll be bused over to Recreation Park. Anybody that goes to either Baker or Feastless. But we always have water available. I sent my team out this morning, buy more cases of water. We're consistently doing it. We get donations of water from different restaurants, from different locations. We always make sure that the kids are hydrated, it's my number one concern every summer. So we're always paying attention to the weather report, making sure we move kids indoors when it gets too hot. And we always keep water available when they're, and they all, and we're always a phone up with, we have a team to deploy just to send out water.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for your, for your help. But like I said, as far as Feastless Park, my main concern was the water fountain was down there, dog can drink from that water fountain. That's why I said, wow, I'll bring you the picture to show you how low that water fountain is. Where, come on, that's not safe. But I would thank you for providing great care for our kids. I will say thank you to the city and Mayor Cahill. Due to where us parents, we appreciate PlaySafe for our children. Due to where, compared to some other places, you do have to pay. So we do appreciate you on that. I thank you for that. I thank the city and Mayor Cahill for keeping their word of, wow, giving our children swimming lessons where the children have been saying they've been getting very good swimming lessons regards to that. But like I said, my main concern, I'm not saying city, well, city problem, but Mr. Lachlan did say that, okay, maybe something, I'm not saying keep an eye on it twenty-four seven with the kids, see how they're entering swimming down there at the River, the same location with the two little boys. So, so like I said, thank you for, for your help on that. But that was my main concern, seeing the little kids down there swimming.
Did you, what time did you see their kids? When did you see them at what time?
That was on, on, on Sunday. That was, I guess it was close to five o'clock, where it was low, it was low tide.
Okay. So maybe we could just ask the police department just to, even though there's signs all over the place for the kids, I just to look and see to make sure that if they see any kids to, make sure to have Dyson to stay out of the way.
Thank you. And then my main concern as far as with Paul Robinson School opening up, I mentioned at the traffic meeting, I believe, twelve dollars and fifty cents for an hour for crossing guard? Is that how much crossing guards are getting paid?
I'm not taking mine out, I'm not sure if they are.
Well, okay, my point is, I hope you can raise it up soon, what, maybe fifteen dollars an hour? And you're going to be opening up Paul Robinson School to make sure, what you're going to need, at least what, six or seven more crossing guards to keep our children safe in the area? And I did mention that the flashers weren't working correctly over there at the traffic meeting. I know they were looking to making it a little, little safer. But yes, due to where it's going to be very busy, I hope if it's possible, you can raise it to start getting crossing guards? Due to where I know, one of your best, I know she retired, she was, I can't remember her name. She retired, what, she was over there on twenty-five years. I know two of your best, when they're out on medical due to their injury. So I hope you can look into maybe raising to start hiring, training crossing guards for the safety of Paul Robinson School when it opens up. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, council. Thank you for having us. My name is Alicia Jones, and this is my colleague, Danielle Cadet. We're volunteer representatives for an organization called the International We Love You Foundation. It's actually located in a hundred and fifty different countries with over a hundred and fifty thousand volunteers. So the reason why we're here today is to make ourselves known in the area which most of our members of this northeast division live in. We want to make ourselves know that we are here to serve our county and our community. Most of our members live in the Middlesex County. I myself do not live in Brunswick, but I am a Piscataway resident of Middlesex County. But the purpose of me speaking today is to let you know our different initiatives that we have going on. Recently, we had a campaign that was called Clean World. And that involved over again, over a hundred and fifty countries. And many people gathered together in order to fulfill the S E G goals of, of sustaining from climate change. So we also wanted to make a difference. We also wanted to make an impact in New Brunswick as well. As we've listened to many people of the city, we listen to many of the directors that we reached out to. We even reached out to the mayor to see where we could help the most here in New Brunswick. We were actually hoping that we can get directed to people who can actually really help us move forward and where we can help in New Brunswick. I know a lot of organizations do litter cleanup, but I'm sure there's other matters that are more pressing and can be more meaningful for the community. We're always willing to help. We're located, our office is in Orizon, New Jersey. But my contact information is for this area. So just leaving an open invitation to please reach out to us. We're in contact right now with Donna Capito, I believe that's her. Okay, okay, you guys know her. Great. Yeah, we're in contact with her. But hopefully we'll be able to do a cleanup, a street cleanup along Kilmer Park Road. I'm sorry, I'm messing it up. Kilmer Avenue. We're going to do a street cleanup on July twenty-second. It sounds as if, you know, many people do those things already. Like I said, if there's anyone that can let us understand what can be more helpful to the town, we'll definitely be willing to help. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradwell, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today, candidate for mayor. Just curious, I'd like to start by asking, has there been an acting mayor appointed at this time?
He's such a what?
Is someone serving as acting mayor? Presently?
Yes. At least. Shame you have to pose, the mayor is not here, the administrator is not here.
Yeah, I'm just curious if...
With a lot of success, isn't it?
Yeah, I know sometimes when the mayor's away, he appoints someone to serve as acting mayor. But presently, there's...
That usually occurs when the mayor is away, not accessible or able to attend to the matters of being mayor. So, Mr. Cradwell's accurate in that sometimes when the mayor is out of reach, unreachable, country, etc., I know it's happened on a couple of occasions, they'll name an acting mayor. But I don't, I don't believe, I don't know the answer to your question as I sit here.
Okay.
But I'm sure if he felt there was a need to have an acting mayor, we would appoint an acting mayor, it doesn't pay.
Okay. Did I see a representative in the mayor's office here? Could you please ask the mayor's office if the mayor has appointed an acting mayor?
To my knowledge, right now, the mayor is the acting mayor. I've not been told otherwise.
The mayor.
Yeah, the mayor is there right now.
He's currently out. Thank you, thank you for the fire fight. I was just curious. Now, I do think that it's a shame the mayor does not attend these meetings because in effect, the public...
Mr. Cradwell, I explained to you numerous times, under this form of government, he does not attend these meetings. Faulty form of government, the mayor doesn't attend any council meeting, not only in Brunswick, but any other municipality that has this form of government.
I respectfully disagree. I've been to some governing body meetings in other Falkner Act towns like Patterson and...
Just a council mayor form of government, administrator, the mayor sits on this...
Yeah, they have a thing off to the side. And, and I've also been, basically every town I've been to, Franklin, Milltown, Piscataway, and the other ones that I've watched on video. I understand. What, my point is, under this form of government, there's nothing preventing him from attending the meetings.
Nothing prevents the mayor. In fact, I asked him, the mayor come to meetings when certain celebratory, congratulatory resolutions were, were given. And I've been here a little, little while, as you know, and I've seen it. The mayor, not only statutorily, does not require more of a voting member of this particular council, but is not required to...
We're in agreement he's not required to. I think it would be better if he did. Because in effect, from the public perspective, it's hard to tell whether he's here and serving or if he's away. And like I said, New Brunswick is the exception to the rule that I've found in the communities I've been to, their governing body meetings, almost always the mayor is present. Now, tonight, I'd like to ask the city council about the most recent Consumer Confidence Report issued by the water utility. So I was able to find this online, but can you tell me where hard copies of the document can be obtained? Because I don't see them in the usual places here at City Hall.
We do have hard copies available at the, at the office in both English and Spanish.
At the water utility?
At the water utility. downstairs. Glad to get you a physical. We have plenty. I appreciate it.
Usually they're the kind of main front entrance and also at the clerk's office. I can see them there, but thank you for answering.
I want people to come down and meet me.
I'll come and see you. So, and can you tell me who these were mailed out to? Because I've lived in New Brunswick for a long time. I did not get one in the mail. Is the city's policy not to mail these to renters?
Do we not mail them to renters? Or do they go to...
There is a record of managers, property owners, that get the, get the notices as far as I know. And I know that they're available to the public to pick up, if you hear about it, like Mr. Cradwell. But nobody knows, there are not leases on file at the city of New Brunswick to know who each and every tenant is to mail a particular notice. If they're a tenant, it's the owner of the property who gets that particular notice, to my knowledge.
Right. If I could just add, yeah, so we, we have a mailing address where we mail all the bills to, and we just reproduce that listing to the people that actually own the property. And if I could also just add, the Consumer Conference Report is, is a great document that comes out. The one issue that I have personally with, with that document is that it's giving you twenty-seventeen data, okay? So it's, it's data from, from last year. If anybody wants to know about the most up-to-date data as of today, I would encourage everybody just to go to Water Watch. It's on the NJDEP website, but it's very easy. You just type in NJDEP and Water Watch, their site's going to come up. You put in whatever town that you're interested in, and you will have the data, the lab results, the moment that we get them. So the laboratories, everything's done through a system called E2. So when laboratory reports the data, there's no middleman. It goes to the website, it comes to us for reporting. And you can get the most up-to-date information. And historically, going back, I believe, to the early nineties as far as that goes. So I encourage anybody that comes in with questions about a Consumer Conference Report too, you know, that's nice, it's last year's data. I want to know what's going on this year as I'm drinking it. If I have a concern, if I read something in the newspaper about a certain chemical that's out there, I want to know up to date what the testing is. So, thank you.
Thank you for the answer. So I'm disappointed I didn't receive one. I think the city could send them to the addresses you have on file. For instance, up to the rent control ordinance, you do know which properties are being rented, and you could mail them to those renters. In fact, the city's three-quarters of the residents are renters. But I'm also disappointed because I reached out to the mayor's spokesperson on Tuesday with questions about the violations in this report, received no response yet. I also reached out to the water director via email, did not receive answers. So I'd first like to ask about the issues outlined in the report. I have copies if you'd like, members of the council.
When did you read that?
Tuesday.
July third?
Yes.
And July fourth suggested?
Yep.
And today's July fifth?
Yeah, I followed up today, and still haven't heard back. So I'd like to ask about, you know, it says here that the, on page one says the water is treated according to EPA's and NJDEP's regulations continually surpassing the quality standards set by those agencies. But on page two, I'm sorry, page three, you'll note that there's an exceedance of a recommended upper limit for iron. The recommended upper limit is point three, and the maximum level detected was more than twice that. Could the water director or anybody here speak to that issue and what caused it? And, you know, what, if anything's being done about it?
I'm trying to think, I, iron's one of my favorite contaminants that are out there. Iron is a secondary contaminant. So therefore, our statement that we mentioned exceeded all our water quality parameters is, is true. But there are secondary standards which cause nuisance issues when it comes to laundry. Certain bathroom fixtures can get staining and issues like that. And that's primarily what iron is. As to the cause of iron, we're very fortunate that we have a very low concentration of iron in our raw water. However, the way in which we transport that water to the community is through iron pipe. And then there's a certain amount that comes out of the iron pipe because of the amount of disinfection that we have going on inside the, the water treatment. So there is, there was a violation, not a violation, there was an exceedance of the recommended limit. But again, it's a secondary standard. It's not a primary standard, and it doesn't have any health effects.
Thank you. And so on page two, you will see chlorine is listed as yes for violation. And if you go to footnote three, it'll say, New Brunswick experienced monitoring and reporting violations for chlorine in April 2017 and August 2017 due to late reporting and the monitoring issues mentioned in the attached notice. But if you go to the attached notice, you'll see reference to April 2017, but no reference to August 2017. So could I learn a little bit more about what happened with the chlorine violation in August 2017, please?
Okay, in both of those incidences... Okay, in both of those incidences, it really wasn't so much an issue with chlorine or the amount of level in chlorine. Our parameters were all well within the required amount of proper disinfection that was out there. In both those cases, they were a clerical issue that occurred. In one particular instance, the one in April, I believe, it was an issue where we duplicated a chain of custody by accident. Sometimes if you leave a copy, you're on two copies versus one. And at the end of the month, we're required to do sixty samples, which is for total coliform. But also part of doing the total coliform test is also chlorine residual when it is done. So it was a technical issue. We do additional samples every month. We do sixty-two, when the requirement is sixty. But because we had this extra chain of custody in there, it was a human error, it was miscounted, and therefore, it came up as fifty-seven units with that. And in the other case, it was reported after the fact of what it was due. We had, there is a deadline for water tests, which is the tenth of the month of every month. We do the test right up to the last day, sometimes of the month. We didn't get the, the testing was done within a timeframe. The reporting issue came unfortunately after the tenth.
Right. So I see that for the water quality parameters, that's for December 2017. What about August 2017?
Again, they were both issued, or it was getting a deadline. December or it was April and...
This says April and August, but then this is April and December.
You may have, I may have a proof issue with that.
So there may be an error in the...
Yeah, there was two. We had two violations.
So that's cause for concern. The, I think the water directors addressed those points now. But why did the city make an effort to notify the public when these violations actually were learned of back in 2017? Why did you wait until May 2018 to put this out?
We were within the guidelines for public notification. When an incident like that occurs, the recommendation is to really just make sure it's in the Consumer Confidence Report. That's why our report came out early this year, because the infraction that occurred in April. Normally, we would submit it at the end of June, and we have till June 30th. But we had to push the schedule up to make the accommodation for the April violation.
So none of those have to have top issues at all?
None at all. I mean, it's, you know, the chlorine was there, the testing was there. We came up out of the sixty samples that we were required to do. We did fifty-seven. Again, it was human error that was causing that. We have done a change in our SOP to correct that, where we have more people checking the same work.
Okay. I just don't see why the city couldn't have spread the word sooner. You don't necessarily mail it out to every consumer, but you could have used your website, you could have mentioned it at one of these meetings. There were ways to...
There's a tier one notification, so if the public's health is at risk. And never have we, you know, doubted doing that. We will always pull the trigger in the order of the public to do that. But we're just following the guidelines that the D E P sets up.
Mr. Laddler is correct, it never has he done that. But of course, there was the famous criminal cover-up here in New Brunswick, where the city failed to notify the public about serious problems with the drinking order. Can you tell me, has the city payers settled the six-figure fine level by the D E P, for that matter?
Set up?
No. Thank you. So now it's still, you still just owe the government more than $300,000?
Yeah, we're still paying.
For this criminal cover-up? Okay. Well, thank you. That's unacceptable, something needs to be done. Thank you. Anybody else? See enough?
Who's your...
Seven. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.